All right, this is a regular meeting of the Hollister City Council on October 15, 2024. The meeting is now called to order. It is 4:02 PM. City Clerk, could you please call rule?
Councilmember Perez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Mayor Casey?
Here.
And Councilmember Morales is not present. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Perez, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. City Attorney, did you want to read out our closed session item?
I will, Mayor. Item 4.1, Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph 2 or 3 of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9 of the Government Code, One Case.
Okay, we are going to take a very short closed session and we will return in a few minutes, hopefully. From today's closed session as well as the closed session from October 1st, 2024 meeting?
Yes, Mayor. From the most recent one just a few minutes ago, there was nothing to report. If you can give me just a moment to log in here, I'll give you the report from the October 1st meeting. So during closed session at the October 1st meeting, Councilmember Burns made a motion to initiate litigation against Yvonne Sanchez and the Baylor Bar and Grill. Councilmember Perez seconded the motion. The vote was as follows: Councilmember Burns, yes. Councilmember Perez, yes. Councilmember Morales, yes. Mayor, yes. And Vice Mayor Resendez was absent from closed session. That's all to report.
Thank you. We're going to move on to special orders of the day. We're going to honor Amelia Banuelos Rojas. Do you want to come to the podium? Right here. Hello. All right. So we're going to do a proclamation for your 101st birthday. Right here. Hello. All right. So we're going to do a proclamation for your 101st birthday. Whereas Amelia Banuelos Rojas is a treasured member of the Hollister community, recently marking her extraordinary 101st birthday. Born in September of 1923 in Zacateca, Mexico, she has called Hollister, California, her home since 1965. And whereas more than just a centenarian, Amelia is a matriarch of her family, having welcomed 14 children into the world. Today, she proudly celebrates over 300 grandchildren and great-grandchildren, spread across six generations, living throughout the United States. And whereas Amelia fondly recalls her arrival in San Benito County, a time of rich agricultural abundance. She worked alongside many residents in the agricultural industry and actively participated in advancing the historic United Farm Worker Movement led by Cesar Chavez. This advocacy for human rights has made a significant impact on all future working generations and their families. And whereas a devout Christian, Amelia actively engages in helping community members through her church, showcasing her dedication to serving those in need. Her advocacy includes participating in church-related missionary work in other countries with her daughter, and advocating for maternal and infant healthcare throughout the United States, including Washington DC with one of her granddaughters. And whereas at the remarkable age of 101, Amelia embraces life with enthusiasm. Her legacy is one of love, gratitude, resilience, and an enduring commitment to her family and community. Now, therefore, I, Mia Casey, Mayor of Hollister, do hereby recognize and honor Amelia Banuelos Rojas on her 101st birthday.
Thank you.
What do you want to say?
From what I have here?
Just say what you want to say.
Thank you for everything you've done for me on this day. Thank you for everything. I've been living here for years, in Hollister. I'm in the 60s, and I'm living here in this country. And I'm grateful for everything, because my family has all lived in peace, and they've all been happy. And that's why I'm grateful to be here in this place.
Can I translate it? She said, "Thank you very much for all you do or you are doing for her here." And she's very thankful to be here in this community, in the Hollister, since 1965, and growing up with her children and living in peace.
Yes.
Can we do a picture? Can we do a picture?
Sure.
Yeah, everybody, yeah.
You could do one with...
Who's the baby?
No.
Here's the baby.
Oh, that's the baby. Who's the baby?
Let me see. Let me see. Let me see. Amelia, three glasses, yeah.
You can't make it close? You don't have a family? You don't have a family?
Don't look at me.
Well, check for me.
You just go forward.
Just stand back. Yeah, I guess so.
How do you see that?
We got one.
I got anyone that I can see.
No, ma'am. Congratulations.
I think we got lost now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is going to be a presentation by Caltrans, providing an update on Highway 156.
Okay. And Mayor Casey, we do have several members, representatives from Caltrans on Zoom forums that are going to be presenting. We have Cara Kong, Outreach Consultant to Caltrans District 5. We have Jim Shivers, Public Legislative Analyst, sorry, Public Legislative Affairs Manager, and Heidi Crawford, Public Information Officer.
Great. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cara Kong. I am an outreach consultant working with Caltrans District 5. I have my professional colleagues on the phone here or on the Zoom, Jim Shivers with Caltrans District 5 and Heidi Crawford. But we wanted to provide a brief update to some major, major changes that we have, major milestones that we have. We have the city of Hollister, San Benito County, and San Juan Batista have experienced with respect to the State Route 156 project. And I will say, we created these slides prior to the implementation of our big traffic shift last week. So what I'll do is I'll kind of briefly go over the slides, because many of you are probably already seeing what's going on out there. I'll talk briefly as to why we did it and also what we are experiencing now that we've made this big shift and what we're trying to actively work on and improve upon. So this slide will be real quick. We have obviously some major project benefits to the State Route 156 project. The one thing I want to point out is that we still have about a year of construction left. We are anticipating to be complete in fall of 2025. We are still on active construction site. While we hit some major milestones, there are still a few things that we will be working on over the next year. So we do ask for some patience, and we do very much appreciate the community's patience. Next slide, please. One thing I want to report out, if you haven't driven through yet, but last week, the night of the 10th, morning of the 11th, the Caltrans contractor reopened Union Road, which had been closed for about eight weeks. This was necessary to realign Union Road with the new expressway where people are now driving. And I know another thing that had been causing some congestion and frustration up on Forest Street. Business 156 was temporary traffic signals that have since been removed, and those have been a place to kind of manage detour traffic. But I wanted to report again, if you haven't been through there, they have been removed. And then one other thing that's different is when you're on Union Road, access to and from San Juan Hollister Road has been removed. And this comes from an agreement between the county and Caltrans from prior to project start. Next slide, please. I'm going to go a little quickly, just so I can hopefully kind of get to everything and leave for those questions. With the reopening of Union Road, we had several major construction milestones. So as many of you probably have already experienced, traffic from the old or existing 156 shifted to the new expressway just south of the highway. There's a new roundabout at Bixby Road, and then the bypass exit to Business 156, Forest Street, from eastbound State Route 156 was reopened. That had been closed, basically from the start of construction. And then there's another small part of Mitchell Road just north of 156 that is closed for approximately eight weeks, and I'll get to those, all these in a couple other slides. Next, please. So just to reiterate, the big traffic shift, that was our big, big, big milestone. It's basically, we've shifted traffic almost the entire extent of the project boundaries, from basically just east of the Alameda in San Juan Batista to basically Forest Street in Hollister. During this stage of construction, we're only maintaining one lane each direction at this time. When we're all said and done, we're just reminded there'll be two lanes each direction, including through the new roundabout at Bixby Road. The old Highway 156 will still be open during construction, but there'll be probably intermediate, intermediate flagging and operations while we're working to transition and make some improvements to make that be a frontage road, and that will be turned over to the county. The one thing that I, the biggest priority that I think I wanted to address here is that, once we did this traffic shift, the biggest impact we have seen, and I know many people have experienced, we've got a lot of calls, emails, is westbound 156 is extremely congested. And this has to do with a couple of things. And one thing we've already implemented, the other one we're rapidly working to try to address. The signal timing at the Alameda and westbound State Route 156, we have since tweaked that, we tweaked that yesterday, to give more time to westbound State Route 156 traffic. So that should help a little bit. And then the other thing that we're working on, a top priority, I don't have a timeline just yet, but the contractor is working on a plan to restripe essentially back to three lanes. What happens when we did the traffic shift, they've dropped to two lanes. So if you're going westbound 156 towards San Juan Batista, as you approach the Alameda, right now, there is one lane turning left, one lane going through or turning right. And this is causing some of this backup. So we're rapidly, we're going to be restructuring the plan to get back to three lanes. So one lane turning left, one through lane, and then a last lane to go straight or to turn right. So again, I don't have a timeline on that, but I know that's probably been one of our biggest issues since we started this shift. And so we, I will report back to Hollister staff as soon as we have a timeline, but we're working on it this week. And then I also talked about the existing State Route 156 being a transition to frontage road. All right. Next slide, please. And then another major milestone is the Bixby Road Roundabout. Again, right now, this is a, we're treating it as a one-lane roundabout because of the highway itself being one lane each direction. But eventually, this will be a two-lane roundabout. And then it'll still have access to and from the old, the existing or old State Route 156. Next slide, please. And then another major activity that's underway is probably a little more impactful for folks over in Hollister, is that there is a small portion of Mitchell Road that is closed approximately eight weeks. Similar to what Caltrans and the contractor had to do for Union Road, we have to reconstruct the intersection of Mitchell Road to align with the new expressway and also with the improvement plan for the old highway to be a detour, or sorry, to be a frontage road. So the detour right now is going up Mitchell Road to Freitas Road to Bixby Road. Basically, Bixby Road is the main way back to Highway 156. There are a couple of things that we're actively working on. The contractor is prioritizing access to northbound Mitchell Road from eastbound and westbound 156. Again, we don't have a timeline on this yet, but it's anticipated that it will not be the full eight weeks. We're hoping to really shorten it to a few weeks, because we know that is a major access point of all other businesses on Mitchell Road. And then the, the other thing that we also experienced over the weekend, a lot of people were coming from the north of Freitas Road, coming down, not catching the fact that Mitchell Road was closed. So we have now relocated several portable changeable message signs to catch people, both that Lucy Brown Lane and Bixby Road, to divert them down to Bixby Road to 156, to try to catch some of that traffic. And we're also looking to do a bigger mailing. We did a more localized mailing, and we're going to do maybe a larger mailing to the north of there. Obviously, next slide, please. And this slide is just a high-level overview of some of the things that we're working on. We are working on to get information out to the public, meeting with several key partners, key, key public agencies. We put out several press releases in advance. We have an outreach flyer that we distributed early October. We also mailed it out, like I talked about, to several properties just north and south of State Route 156. And some, we continue to put out social media and messaging regarding some of the major changes. And then we, we have a series of portable changeable message signs that we can move around to notify folks of changes or, or detour routes. And then we, as I said before, we are getting a lot of calls and emails, so we really, we want to let everyone know that we are still, we would love to hear from you, because oftentimes, this is how we, if we don't see it or experience it ourselves, we learn a lot from the calls that we get. So we really encourage people to still call our public information line or our public information email. And then the last thing I didn't have on here, but we are working, we have three major navigation apps, Google Maps, Apple Maps, and Waze, to make sure that our closures and reopenings are reflected adequately. We're still working with Apple Maps and Google Maps to show the Mitchell Road closure. So there, it's, these are sometimes hard to work, but you can't call and get a, you can't call and get a person. You have to go through a series of requests, and then they wait for big phone data and user data to confirm what you tell them is happening. So it's a little bit of a lag, and that was one thing that we experienced on Thursday morning, was people expressing frustration that the apps weren't updated. So we're actively working on that. But that is a high-level overview of what has all occurred in the last week. Again, we want to thank the community for their patience during construction. And it's really all right, people, there are improvements still to come. This is still an active construction project, and we're looking forward to being able to provide those in the next year. I guess hopefully, and then my last slide is just, just some of the key ways we get information out the door. So if there's any questions or comments, these are, these are where you can a lot of times find the information. And I apologize, at the very beginning, I didn't mention Terry Thompson, the project manager for Caltrans, would normally be delivering this presentation. She unfortunately is not able to attend tonight. So I, because I work closely with her, as well as the Caltrans Public Information Office, as well as being over at the COG, I was asked to help provide the information. So hopefully, I have, if there's any questions, we still have a little more time.
All right. Do we have any questions for Caltrans?
Just thank you for the information.
Thank you. We don't need to take public comment on this, right? It's just informational, or do we?
The, the public has the right to comment on anything on the agenda.
Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comments for this item.
Okay, then. All right. Then we're going to move on to the next presentation. It's Heaven Helps, uplifting the community through outreach and support. Mr. Heaven.
Okay, thank you. With, on August 20th, we received a request at the end of the meeting that received consensus from Councilmember Perez to have Mr. Heven come give a presentation on his organization, Heven Helps, and so he'll be given a presentation this evening.
How's everyone doing tonight? Tim Heaven, my organization's Heaven Helps. I just really looked forward to bringing some services to the House members of our community. I think we need it here. So I'm trying to bring, my organization is called Heaven Helps. It's an organization dedicated to transforming the lives of the unhoused population in Hollister. And also, I've done a lot of work in the surrounding areas as well, led by founder Timothy Heaven, which is me. We aim to uplift the community through focused outreach and resources and driven support programs. Okay, let's go to the next slide here. So our mission at Heaven Helps is dedicated to providing outreach, support, and resources to the unhoused individuals in Hollister, San Benito, and Monterey Counties. I will primarily be focused here in Hollister is my main focus, because I live here. The mission statement is to meet people where they're at, offering immediate needs assessments, connection to resources, and compassionate support. The other focus areas I'm going to focus on, besides unhoused area, is those people recently released from incarceration, people struggling with addiction, and then people with other disabling conditions, mental health issues. A lot of them are intertwined. Okay, so the homeless population, San Benito recently saw a 74% increase in the homeless, homelessness rising to 621 approximately individuals in the latest 20, 24-point-in-time count. This information is just a common knowledge from my involvement with the C O C. I don't think this, actually, the numbers have been actually released yet, but when they do, it'll be very similar to what you see there. So the lack of resources, so Hollister only has one shelter in Hollister, and about 50-bed spaces total. And about 80% of the homeless population remains unsheltered here in Hollister, San Benito County. The majority are in Hollister, though. The impact on the community, the crisis affects public health and safety while stigmatizing homelessness within the community. stigmatizing homelessness, uh, within the community. Um, so, uh, Heaven Helps Solutions, uh, we want to get out into encampments, and we actively visit homeless encampments to provide immediate support to individuals where they are. Um, we want to do needs assessments. I think, uh, we got to get everyone signed up into H M I S, uh, here in this area, not a lot of, uh, there's actually no one actually going out there and, uh, maybe once, they do one event every once in a while to get people in H M I S, and, uh, I think that's where we need to start, you know, we need to just, that's sort of, that's a good starting point, uh, just getting the needs assessments done, including housing assessments, uh, mental health services and healthcare. I'm the first, actually, uh, community health worker that's contracted with Medi-Cal in the county, um, and it's a peer-led support model using, uh, trained community health workers to build trust and provide services, so I'm able to bill them, uh, Medi-Cal actually for a lot of the services I could provide. Um, I also have a, a collaboration with service providers as another part of my plan, uh, so partnerships with local organizations and landlords, uh, to secure housing and services for people, you know? I think we really need to, uh, build on this. I have been, already, I've done a lot of work already to, to get a lot of that head start on that too. Um, so the comprehensive support services, Housing First, uh, focused on immediate housing solutions with ongoing mental health and substance abuse support, uh, Medi-Cal Services, billing Medi-Cal for case management, housing navigation, and health services, uh, re-integ- uh, reintegration programs, helping formerly incarcerated individuals with housing, job training, and breaking cycles of homelessness, uh, resources, linkage, so connecting clients to food, shelter, healthcare, and employment services. And then, of course, uh, trauma-informed care, so, uh, we always want to try to provide empathetic, uh, person-centered support to ensure, uh, uh, long-term stability. So, uh, the unique value proposition, so I, I have, uh, lived experience in, uh, being homeless, incarcerated, and, uh, also, uh, with substance abuse issues. And so I, I'm trying to leverage my lived experience, uh, which I've been doing for the last few years, I'm very involved in many of the unhoused organizations within our community. Our team, uh, includes individuals with lived experience of homelessness, enhancing credibility and rapport. It allows us to, it allows us to, to meet, when we say meet people where that, you got to kind of know where they've been, you know what I'm saying, to be able to relate and be able to really, uh, have, build that bond with those and rapport with those, uh, people out there. Community relationships, so we are trusted by both the unhoused population and service providers, uh, creating strong community ties. Uh, cost-efficient solutions, so by reducing the need to, for costly interventions like incarceration, we provide cost-efficient support, you know? We're trying to take a more proactive report, uh, approach instead of like a reactive approach. Um, so using evidence, innovative approaches, using evidence-based models like Housing First and Trauma-Informed Care. Uh, let's see here, so, uh, a client success story, uh, I've, I've had many of them that I could share with you, uh, but we had a formerly unhoused individual, we were providing housing, addiction support and job training, uh, transitioning to stable living, uh, the impact the client gained employment and secured permanent housing through partnerships with local providers. Many of those success stories. So I, I'm really trying to establish like partnerships with the city, the county, and really just trying to bring this all together to, to kind of work together on, on this, because I can't do it all myself, you know? I will expand my business and organization, but, uh, I definitely want some involvement from the city and the county. Uh, so working closely with San Benito and Monterey Counties to expand outreach services. We are one C O C with San Benito and Monterey County, of course. Uh, Medi-Cal, so I'm contracted with Medi-Cal, local landlords, we are going over this, let's see. Uh, so the goal, my goal originally, this is an old presentation, this is, uh, yeah, that's why I did, that's why it didn't make sense, this is the first one I sent. So our, our goal is to secure like 300 to 350,000 to expand outreach, uh, increase case management capacity and enhance, uh, housing services. Uh, I also provide like a breakdown of the, the, what that budget would cover, uh, I realize that the city doesn't have that much funding available, so I really, yes.
This is the presentation we received on October 11th.
Okay, the presentation in the packet that is here is not what is being broadcast on the screen, so if you could put that on there, that would be great, thank you.
Sorry about that. Any, any questions so far from anyone? I think, uh, yeah, the only thing I'd really change in it is like I, I changed it for the, to, uh, the, I think if we start with like 80,000 is what I think Heaven Helps needs to really get going, I think would be a good start, um, just to secure, uh, office space, uh, to be able to hire at least one other, uh, person in the office. Uh, and then also, I want to get signed up with H M I S to do, uh, be able to get people sub, and put into H M I S, because, uh, that's very important to have. And, uh, yeah, I need to put a breakdown on the thing here. Yeah, I had, I'd redone it to make it a little shorter. Yeah, if you just want to pull up that last page, that's fine. The last page, yeah, the last page, that's just the breakdown of like the, the funny requests that I'm, I guess I'm asking for. Let's see, I think, uh, uh, the only, the other thing I want to say is I, I, I really do wish that Hollister, uh, would, uh, put some, some, some funding out for homeless services, I mean, there's no, I, I don't think there's any right now. Kind of, yeah. I can't even see that. Uh, this is our breakdown of the, uh, of the funding, uh, before, if we blow that up, there you go. Uh, so yeah, so office space and utilities, uh, so it'd be securing office space and covering utilities for the first year. Uh, outreach vehicle, uh, it'd be nice to have an outreach vehicle to be able to go out to these encampments daily and, uh, operational costs for salaries, outreach workers, and the essential programs and expenses. Uh, like I said, a lot of, a lot of the, uh, I could build Medi-Cal for a lot of the services I provide, so I'm not too concerned about my own salaries and stuff like that, it's other stuff for, to help us operate, uh, technology and equipment, and then, uh, training and compliance. I, I do, I like, as, as I get this business going, I, I really plan on expanding it and really accomplishing some great things. Um, this is just a start, you know what I mean? But I'm, like I said, I, uh, I've been leading, uh, outreach, uh, efforts in the area in the Monterey and San Benito Counties for like the last three years. Um, I'm the C O C Leadership Council, I'm on, uh, the Chair of the Lived Experience Advisory Directive, I'm on the Corporation for Supportive Housing, California State Policy Advisory Committee, um, I'm contracted with, uh, the National Alliance on Homelessness, I do a lot of consultant work for other organizations. So I'm just excited to bring, like, I, I live here in Hollister, I've been doing a lot of the work in Monterey County, I'm trying, you know, I, I see the need here though, so I'm trying to bring the services here. Thank you guys, any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Burns.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I, I am supportive, uh, but that's a qualified supportive. And so have you taken this presentation before the County Board of Supervisors or San Juan Batista City Council, and if so, what have their responses been?
I have not yet. I have not yet.
Fair, fair, I, I would encourage you to do that, because again, I'm not, I'm not sure, you mentioned 600-plus, uh, unsheltered people in, in this region. Do you know how many of those unsheltered are actually within the city of Hollister versus the county of San Benito, or?
About 90%.
About 90% actually are in the city, okay. And so, um, city manager, he mentioned that he was not aware of anything that the city does for unsheltered people, can you clarify that, please?
Yes, so through our permanent local housing allocation, we're under an agreement with the county to provide support to the, uh, their shelter operations.
And, and do we know financially what that looks like?
Uh, so that is roughly, call it about $175,000 a year. Um, it's based on pro, uh, uh, transfer tax that is assessed on all real estate transactions in the city, and, uh, we also are providing, uh, support to Amaya's house through that as well. So those dollars have been committed through the first five years of the project, and so we're in year four now.
Okay, and, and it seems to me like there's a definite need, there's a definite opportunity. It feels like, from my perspective, we're talking a lot of approximates where I kind of need some precise numbers, and, and so, um, I would encourage you to come back with more specific, with a more defined business plan when you're talking about office space. You have an approximate number, but, um, for my, for my appetite, I'd like to know more specifics. I'd also like to know what percentage of, uh, the beds available, what, what the, are they full every night, do they have an overflow, or are they under, are they underperforming?
At the shelter?
Yeah.
The shelter's full, you know?
Okay, and so again, those are the kind of things that I need to know consistently, and, and I do have an appetite to, to, to discuss this further. I also think, um, even though we're talking October right now, I think this would be a great budgetary conversation too, or mid-year budget conversation, um, because there are a lot of, uh, very strong, very appropriate nonprofits that provide a lot of service to our community, um, and, and they often provide gap coverage, and that feels to me very much like what we're talking about here as well. And, and I have a, I have a strong appetite for that, but I just need more data before I could really, uh, commit to a, a specific number for myself, and I'm only speaking for myself on this council, so, uh, thank you for your presentation, uh, I appreciate your passion, I appreciate your commitment, and I couldn't agree more with who better to deal with people that are of challenged backgrounds than somebody that's got life experience in that regard, much, much more appropriate in my mind, so thank you, I very much appreciate it, and look forward to follow-up, uh, interactions with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burns, if I may just add to that, um, in the discussion of working with him to put this item on, uh, you're in the process of starting a nonprofit, the organization in front of you today is an LLC, which is a limited liability corporation.
Councilmember Perez.
Thanks, Tim. Lived experience, that's, that's, that's the key thing right here, because you know what it's like out there, you know what it's, and because of that, and you've come out of it, you're now able to go back and help people. Thank you. It's people like you that make our community better. They're, um, I am totally interested in, because when you get out of incarceration or homeless, or trying to get out of homelessness, there's, it's difficult. Some people actually get through and live prosperous lives and come back to help people. Good job, bro. Get some more information, come back.
Yeah, thank you. Like a big part of, uh, uh, what I, what, uh, like, and kind of sparked me to do this was the, the fact that I became the first C H W contractor with Medi-Cal, and so by, uh, there's also grant opportunities I'm, I'm getting, I'm looking into. The reason I became LLC is just because of that fact that I'd be billing Medi-Cal for services, and so that's why I set it up as LLC, but I'm also going to either get a fiscal sponsor or have a nonprofit side of things as well. But thank you for sharing.
Mr. Mayor, any questions? Well, uh, Mr. Heaven, you and I sit on the Leadership Council, and I appreciate, I know you're connected at so many levels, and you're doing a lot of different things, so, um, I'm definitely interested in, we, we should talk more, just because we talk all the time at the meetings, but, uh, um, I do think we need more wraparound services. I know we have a shelter, but it's obviously not enough. I did want to mention to you that at the supervisor meeting today, they did go over the point-in-time count, and they actually started releasing the data, and it was pretty shocking that we went from 300 to like over 600 homeless, so there's definitely a need for help out there. I think you could really be a catalyst and bring a lot of, of things here. Like to connect you with a few folks, I don't know if you've met the Lampies, um, they do a lot of work, and I know that they're kind of having to scale back, so there might be an opportunity there for you to fill, fill some shoes there, and then, uh, we have our community foundation also that might be willing to support, and, um, also, we'll just talk about your business plan. I, I agree with Councilmember Burns, I think you could flesh out a more of a business plan, it, it just gives us that comfort feeling of exactly, you know, what you need, your needs are, so that you're not, you know, short for what you actually need, so, um, I'm happy to talk with you more about that, I could connect you with some business folks that might be able to help you.
I think the hardest, the most difficult part for me is like, like, like trying to, uh, get exact numbers on a rental space or stuff like that when I don't even know if I have any money.
Right, so. Anyways, I want to thank you though for bringing all the info to us, and definitely would like to talk, hear from you again. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comments for this item.
All right, thank you so much. All right, we're going to have the urban area water master plan presentation. Mr. Vaya.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Tonight we have a, um, presentation, um, for the update for the urban water, um, supply and, let me get it right, urban water supply and treatment master plan. The presentation will be given by Holly Kennedy from H D R, they're a consulting engineer, uh, hired by, um, San Benito County Water District, and then, um, Jeff Catano, the general manager for San Benito County Water District, will have some comments after
Okay, are you ready for me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great, hello everybody, I'm Holly Kennedy, I'm, um, with H D R Engineering. I have been supporting, um, your community with, um, water supply master planning efforts for a number of years now, um, and I have a presentation here tonight to talk about where we're at with the latest master plan and, uh, project that is, uh, underway. So we'll go to the next slide. Couple of things we'll talk about, I just covered that, next slide. Um, so in terms of background, uh, like I said, I, we have been doing, um, master planning to look at water supply needs in the broader urban area in San Benito County for about the last 20 years. This was organized back in an original, in a memorandum of understanding back in 2004, um, and the parties to that were the city of Hollister, San Benito County, and San Benito County Water District. That M O U was later amended to bring in Sunny Slope County Water District, and most recently it was amended again to bring in, um, San Juan Batista. As part of that M O U, one of the major objectives on that is to, um, look at how to, um, provide reliable water supply for the communities. Um, so we'll go to the next slide. So over those last 20 years, um, through this collaborative effort, there have been a number of projects that have been accomplished, um, representing about $150 million in capital infrastructure, and just to highlight a few, um, the city's wastewater reclamation project was part of the master planning efforts, um, the upgrade of the La Salt Water Treatment Plant back in 2014 was a key recommendation that came out of it, and then more recently, the West Hills Water Treatment Plant in 27, that was completed in 2017 that provides treated surface water that's imported from San Luis Reservoir, um, to your community in Hollister, as does the La Salt Plant. Um, there's some other projects there too, but in the interest of time. So most recently, we have updated the master plan again, we do this about every five years because things change, um, and so we're always trying to think about where we need to be in the future, because water supply projects in, in the state of California can take 10 to 15 to 20 years to get underway, and so we're always looking forward in the future. So the objectives of this most recent master plan included, um, to provide continuous improvement towards, um, our water quality goals. And for your, um, community hardness, water hardness is a really key focus for, for the supply for your customers as they turn on their taps, they want to have water that, that tastes good and doesn't create a white crust on their appliances. Um, the second objective there is to identify and implement water supply options to increase dry year water supply reliability. Um, we're in an area that is prone to drought, and unfortunately, when we have a drought, um, you know, the water, there's just not enough water available from, for the import component, so that's that water, the Central Valley Water Project that, um, where water's imported from San Luis Reservoir, there's, that, that water supply becomes very unreliable. Um, and so how do we, how do we prepare ourselves for that for future droughts? Um, to provide reliable water supply for future growth, people want to move to your community because it's so beautiful, right? And it's great to be there, and so we have to plan for that, there has to be water available when, um, and to respond to your, your general plans and your growth plans for the future. Um, since the prior master plan, there were some other things that had happened as well that we wanted to acknowledge and bring into the master plan, so there was the, the state's Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, um, some ongoing efforts that San Benito County had for their managed aquifer recharge program, and then there was also the inclusion of San Juan Batista, um, as part of the, the M O U partners and providing treated surface water, um, from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant out to San Juan Batista. And the last one there is to do this all in a coordinated fashion, um, so that's really a key focus in why you guys all came together 20 years ago to work on this. I'll go to the next slide. So here are some key findings, and, and the master plan is, you know, there's a lot of information there, so I tried to sort of boil it down to the key, the key efforts. So water hardness, um, continues to be a key driver for our overall projects. For this master plan, um, consistent with what we've done in the past, um, the level of service goal is to provide, oh, an average water supply, uh, wa, average water quality and of a 180 milligrams per liter of hardness in the distribution system, um, and that really helps people to not have to rely on water softeners, and so that's a, that's a key goal, so that means that we have to have about 80% of the water supply needs to come from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant or the La Salt Water Treatment Plant. Um, so that's that imported surface So, that's that imported surface water that's coming in from San Luis Reservoir. The next one here is that the current water supply is sufficient to meet existing water demands in a normal year. That's great. When people turn on their taps, water comes out. That's wonderful. But in a drought year, that imported supply, whether that's CVP water or what we call spot market purchases, is unreliable. The next one is that there's a deficit of high-quality water for existing customers in dry and critically dry years. And there's a pretty complex graphic down here in the bottom, but basically, to boil it down, it says, "We're about 1,200 acre-feet of water per year short in a drought year." That means that that high quality of water that we import from San Luis Reservoir, there's not enough of it in a drought year, because, you know, there's only so much water in the state overall, and everybody's got a straw in the giant bowl, right? And so, there's only... There's a deficit for your existing customers of about 1,200 acre-feet. And then, the last one is, if there's a deficit for your existing customers, that deficit continues to grow as you add connections, as people move to Hollister. So, there's a deficit also for future customers as well. So, we need to plan for growth as well. We'll go to the next slide. So, as we were doing this master plan, we considered all kinds of options, and so, those are sort of shown here quickly, some different surface water storage concepts, expanding existing reservoirs, looking at new reservoirs, and then, we considered some groundwater concepts. And one of those groundwater concepts that I'll focus on a little bit today is Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project. As we did our analysis, we concluded, as I'll show on the next slide, that that's really the lowest-hanging fruit. So, we'll go to the next one. So, the key recommendations that came out of the master plan are first... The first priority is going to be to implement Phase 1 of an Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project to meet the water supply needs for the existing customers in dry years. So, that's, I said, in the dry drought conditions, there's not enough water. So, this is a project to meet that need for your existing customers. The second bullet there is to pursue expansion of San Luis Reservoir. That's the BF Sisk Dam Raise Project in collaboration with the Bureau of Reclamation. And then, the third item is the implementation of the new treated water transmission pipeline from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant out to San Juan Bautista. And in that graphic down in the bottom, you can see there that gray bar across the bottom is the existing imported surface water supply, that CVP supply. And that next blue bar is our ASR Project, that first phase of the ASR Project. And so, where we are today, going out in time, hopeful to have that project on in the next couple of years. That's... I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And then, the next bar above that is the BF Sisk Dam Raise, which would expand the capacity, the volume of storage available in San Luis Reservoir. And then, we'll probably update the master plan again before we get to any of those other recommendations. So, we'll go to the next slide. So, I wanted to spend a couple of slides here to talk about this ASR Project. It's Aquifer Storage and Recovery. And so, the purpose of this project, I guess before I even say that, Aquifer Storage and Recovery means we're gonna take surface water, we're gonna inject it into the existing groundwater basin and store it. So, we're gonna take water when it's available in wet years, treat it, put it into the groundwater basin, and store it like it's a reservoir, an underground reservoir. And then, in a drought year, we're gonna pump it back out of the ground, and it's gonna be that same high-quality water, similar high-quality water, when we pull it back out of the ground so that we can use it and give it to the existing customers. So, our purpose here is to accelerate an ASR Project to provide that drought-resilient water supply for existing customers. There was a flurry of grant funding that was available over the last, we'll say, 18 to 24 months. And seeing that that grant funding was available, we really sort of leaned on the accelerator, if you will, to try to create this project that would qualify for grant funding, so that we could bring that free money into the community to get this project moving as quickly as possible. The key pieces of this project include the expansion of the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. So, when that project was... When that plant was originally designed, it was designed to be the capacity to increase. So, it was built as a four-and-a-half-million-gallon-per-day treatment-capacity plant, and it was designed to expand from four-and-a-half to six-and-three-quarters, and then again to nine MGB, so that the plant can expand to meet future growth needs over time. We took advantage of that with this project to expand it, to provide the treated water capacity for this particular... For the treated water capacity to inject into the ground. So, we have five wells as part of this project. These are ASR wells, where we inject water into the ground, leave it be for a year, two years, and then, in a drought year, extract it back out of the ground. And then, there's some new pipelines associated with this project as well, to convey water up to the wells and then back to the distribution system. So, we'll go to the next slide. So, this project is about a $50 million capital cost, and we have been successful in securing $20 million of grant funding. So, that's 40% of the project will be paid for through grants, which is pretty fantastic. And the grants that we've been successful with are shown here, the states... Two are state-funded grants, and one is a federal grant, which triggers NEPA in our process, but that's okay, because we can use the grants against each other to provide some of the matching dollars that we have to provide. So, next slide. And then, I'll just wrap it up here. So, where we're at right now, we're completing design and permitting, and then, we'll be initiating construction for the ADROP Project. That's, again, to serve existing customers. There's ongoing efforts. San Benito County Water District has ongoing efforts with the Bureau of Reclamation for the BF Sisk Dam Raise Project, to provide that capacity for future growth. And then, as part of the master plan, there were a number of other supply options that were identified, and so, we'll revisit those again in a future master plan, kind of keep them alive, if you will, because we know more water will be needed again in the future as people continue to move to your wonderful town. And then, the last items there are really about finalizing how this will be funded and financed. And then, once that is dialed in, updating the institutional agreements, those agreements, the water supply and treatment agreement, for example, between the city, San Benito County Water District, and Sunny Slope County Water District, and then folding in San Juan Bautista into that as well. And then, stakeholder outreach, just making sure that people in the community are aware of what the project is doing, what the goals of the project are, how it's moving forward, where we're at, and all of that stuff, and the benefits that it's gonna provide, that additional reliable source of water for drought years. All right, and I think that's all I had tonight, if there's questions.
Any questions? I have a couple, just quick ones, hopefully. So, you mentioned a $50 million capital cost, and that we've got about $20 million. What are we doing for the other $30 million? How is that gonna be paid for?
Jeff, do you want to address that?
I think that's... Those are the comments that Jeff was gonna provide, like how this is gonna be funded.
Oh, good.
Hi, good afternoon. So, I'm Jeff Catano. I'm the general manager for San Benito County Water District. So, to answer your question, how's the rest of it going to be funded? The remainder of the $30 million, the Water District is going to fund. We're either going to issue bonds for that or take it out of our reserves. If the Water District takes it, issues bonds for it, what we're gonna be doing is the Water District will look... We've got a reliability fee that's set up in our rates. The reliability fee will fund and pay for the principal portion of the bond. The Water District will pay for the interest portion of it. So, a majority of the project is gonna be paid for either through grants or from the interest portion that the Water District will pay for. The only thing that we're asking the rate payers ultimately to pay for is the principal portion of this. Right now, it looks like we've gone through, we've done an analysis of what it looks like with the grant funding, and it works out to about $141 an acre-foot is what will have to be charged over the next 20 years for every acre-foot of water that's sold for MNI water. That works out to about $35 a year for each one of the service connections that you have. So, it's really not a significant amount, you know, when you look at it that way. And it will provide, you know, reliability in those drought years, when basically, if you look back four years ago, two years in a row, the Water District got almost no water from the Bureau of Reclamation. We were able to continue to be able to serve and had water, because we had some water stored in San Justo, and I had other water stored in other areas that I was able to pull back, but it was insufficient. We had to really cut back on how much we were able to deliver to the city on Sunny Slope. This project will allow us to be able to take the wet year water. Two years ago, when it was really rainy, I had 20,000 acre-feet of water left that I couldn't use. So, this project will take a portion of that. It's not gonna be able to take all of it. But it'll take a portion of that, be able to treat it, inject it into the ground. When we extract it, it'll come back out of the ground at very... Almost the same quality as it went in, so very high-quality water, and be able to deliver it into the city of Hollister's system. All of the water will end up being aggregated that we have, so even though it's gonna go into the city system, everybody will benefit from it. All of the MNI customers will benefit. It just becomes part of that water supply that's available for everybody.
Okay. And just to clarify, so the $50 million, the capital cost, is just for the Aquifer program, right?
It's just for the project.
The Sisk Dam program is totally different and has its own costs. That's sort of out there, though, right? It's not... Is that affecting us at this point, or is that...
It's a project that I'm working on right now. And it is affecting us, because it takes time, like Holly said, to put those projects in place. And we need to be able to start collecting the money required to be able to do that. That project... This project that we're talking about, the ADROP or ASR Project, is not for any portion of it is for growth. It's only for the existing customers. All of the growth that's going to occur will be covered in what we call a capacity fee that we're working with your staff and Sunny Slope staff to be able to incorporate into the connection fees that will be delivered to the... You know, part of that connection fee will be delivered to the Water District to help pay for that project. That's gonna be another $50 million project. But that project will be able to serve almost 6,000 homes, so it takes us out quite a ways. And it will also be able to benefit from the ASR Project, because we'll be able to store water in that project in years when, again, like when we have the 20,000 acre-feet of extra water, we'll be able to store that water in San Luis Reservoir, and then, over time, draw that back out, either put it into the Aquifer, store it, or, again, deliver it directly.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other questions, do we have public comment on this item?
Mayor Casey, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can we comment real quick on it? Can we comment?
Do you want to fill out a card to do that?
We're gonna fill out a card, that's okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. Do any members of council have any brief questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Mayor Casey, before consent agenda, public comments on items not on the agenda?
Sorry, I skipped right over that. I didn't want to say it all.
That's right. Sorry. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the records, and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining us via Zoom using a cell phone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any items not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have public comment? Yes, Mayor Casey, we have one. Jesse Bar.
Hi, everyone. So, I just want to talk about the building department, the way all the inspections and all the reviews are handled. It's taking way longer than what it should be. So, what we're doing in the gas station part on the Chevron 7th and San Benito, we're making like a six-unit residential dormitory. We have a gas station and a restaurant next door. So, we tried to like speed it up and get it done, and we are working with the building official, name is Gabriel. We turned in paperwork for the ADN compliance. You know how ADN compliance is no... Another way around, you only one way to go, so you have to comply with it. Same with the city code, okay? What happened is, I'm trying to do that one since '08, '06. That's like two, three months ago. We didn't get nowhere. Finally, I have architect, him, meeting at the site. He did not show up. I'm sorry for that part. He did not show up, so then, he... I called him, I said, "We have appointment 8:30 here and meeting, so what gonna happen?" He said, "I'm so busy, I cannot make it there. Please come to my office." That was almost like 9:30 by the time we made to his office. We spent like 15 to 20 minutes. There was me, general contractor, and the architect, and him. We spent like 30 minutes wasting time, and we didn't get nowhere. After that, we have architect writing letter to him, showing the pathway travel from the street all the way to the gas station, and the restaurant is not required. He said he will not sign it. He will send somebody else on the foreleaf to sign it. I mean, if somebody is not competent, like enough to do the job, when the code's there and the numbers are there, if you can't assign him, what the heck are you doing? Why is this waste of time? Another thing is what I noticed with that guy, is he sent the inspectors in, then he tells them to go and wait there, then he shows up. That was like we're getting the electric release. Electric release, like they check the wires, make sure the wires nice and tight, so, and the boxes. So, that's all, there's 15 minutes, 10-minute work, but the electrician have to be there, too. Okay? Then, he shows up, then he start writing up this and this and this and that need to be done. Then, he wait, call the supervisor up. The three guys doing the stupor inspection, 10-minute deal, and wasting three guys there for 30 minutes. Then, he write the notes, and then, all the work was done with a permit. They signed off with the city inspectors. There was three steps next to the stairs, like going into the mirrors. He said, "No, I have to have four feet landing outside and inside." I don't know. I'd show David what exactly we're talking about, and I bring to his attention. I don't know how much he get it done, how ready he talk about it. So, I mean, so many people are wasting their money and time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Those are all the public comments we have.
Now, we're gonna move to consent agenda. Do members of the council have any...
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
Yes. Before we speak about the consent agenda, there's item 8.1 that you agendized that I have questions about.
Item 8.1?
Yes, item 8.1. This item is removed, consideration of action pertaining to the alleged conduct of Vice Mayor Roland Resendez, an alleged violation of municipal code, sections 2.05, also referred to as the Council Code of Conduct, Ethics, and Conduct, that you agendized. I've got questions about it.
Before you ask your question, I'd like to ask the city attorney, if we remove an item from the agenda, are we allowed to discuss it?
No, it's been removed from the agenda.
Okay. Then, we're gonna have to move on to the consent agenda. Do any members of...
Can I ask a question to the city attorney, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. City Attorney, I see it on the agenda. It hasn't actually been removed, and since it's on the agenda, I would assume I have the right to ask questions. If not, I'd like to come talk as a member of the public for three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna defer to the city clerk. She controls the agenda and publication.
Yes, Vice Mayor Resendez, so when the agenda was initially published on Friday, this item was included in it. Then, a revised agenda was published on Saturday around lunchtime, probably around 12:30. This item was removed due to it already being on the agenda. That's why you still see it there, because we need to show that it had been on there. But you can also see that it states this item is removed, and then below that, it does say have the recommended action, and that recommended action crossed out and strike through. So, due to the system, you don't entirely remove it, and we also want the public to see that there had been an item. It is a revised agenda, as you can see on the front page of the agenda.
Thank you. So, City Attorney, you're stating that the item that the mayor placed on here to silence me once again has been removed by her, and I don't have the right to ask questions about it, and I don't have a right to come and talk about it during public comment?
So, I had sent council a correspondence regarding this, and actually, I placed it on the agenda without consulting with the mayor prior to placing it on the agenda, because under the rules of... under the rules of conduct, that's she acts as a department head in that regard and can place items on the agenda and remove them from the agenda. So it was removed from the agenda by her, but I was the one that put it on the agenda.
Therefore, I don't have a right to speak about it or to ask questions?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to consent. Do any of the council have brief questions or comments on the consent agenda? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't necessarily want to pull item 9 dot 12, but I do want to register a no vote on that, and I'd like to make a comment when it would be appropriate in conjunction with that no vote.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we will go to public comment.
We have one speaker, Mark Sterrett, for item 9.5.
My name is Mark Sterrett. As a former member of the Airport Advisory Commission, when this Arrow Zero came up during one of our meetings there, firstly, there was very little, we weren't really allowed to discuss what was going on, and it was processed and moved forward to the city council. And I want to compliment Mr. Burns for saying, "Hey, we really don't have enough information on this to make a decision about that." Couple of items that I want to address concerning that is if they go in there and they do essentially a temporary pad and they put this plastic mat down, when they finish that and they leave, it's going to look, and I'll hand that up to you, but it's going to look like this is what CalFire's helipad looks like, which is loose gravel gets back onto the tarmac, and it's, there's no benefit to the airport. So what I would like to do is have some things cleared up. Number one, there is discussion of the trailer being on, already being on the airport property. Well, it is on the airport property, but it's all the way down on the very south end of the property line on a semi-gravel dirt road. I've never been clear on what is, I've been told it's not hydrogen that's in there, but I don't know. Maybe some of you are around when the Hindenburg blew up. We had our own little explosion at the airport a couple of years ago where they blew a wing off an airplane. So my concern is, and it was Mr. Burns' concern also, is that the fire marshal has brought into the mix here, so we know what's going to, what's going to be in that trailer and how it's going to be handled, because it sounds like it may be a very volatile product, all right? Now, I'm all for the hydrogen thing, I like it, but it needs to be looked at. And then I don't want to see that pad left, they put a temporary pad in, I want to see them put a permanent pad in. And it shouldn't be to airport standards where it's going to be a certain amount of compacted fill with a certain amount of reinforced concrete. And with that, with that is we have an asset to the airport. We don't have it left like CalFire has left this pad out there for the last year and a half. So I appreciate if you guys would dig into it a little deeper, because we were never given the information at the Airport Advisory Commission meeting, and there's, I think these things need to be looked at in greater detail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Those are all the public comments for consent.
All right. So then do we have any members that, of the council that wish to pull anything from the consent calendar?
9.5 for staff report. Yes, please.
Okay, so we're going to pull 9.5. And then you had made a comment, sir, about 9.1 or?
9.12.
9.12.
On the renewal of the cultivation permit. And so my comment is simply that, again, these things come to us at the last moment, and this has been a reoccurring practice, and I would like to see us get advanced notice on these things, that we can actually really look at them more deeply. And I don't want to penalize the business owner, but I would like for staff to be a little more responsive to council's needs. These things have been consistently last minute options, and I recognize that this may have come out on the council agenda on Friday, reissued on Saturday, but here we are Tuesday, and it seems to be that this is a past practice. I don't know if it's a strategy or if it's just a bad practice, but those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. So then, with the exception of 9.5, can I get a motion to approve the consent?
Sir, moot.
Is there a second?
Point of clarification, please.
Yes.
Thank you. So with the exception of 9.5, are we going to consider adopting that afterwards?
We would go back and consider the item separately after.
Okay. And then with 9.1, 9.2, we're including that in Councilmember Perez's motion?
If he is registering a no vote, then?
Yes, I'll have, I will show the no vote. If, assuming that it passes, it would be 3-1 with Councilmember Burns voting no on it.
Okay, thank you. I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, so motion carries. All right, we're going to move to item 9.5. Can we get the report on Zero Avia?
Good evening, mayor and council members, and members of the public. I'm Jeff Crusher, the airport director. So before you tonight is the bring back of the item considering a ground lease for Zero Avia at the airport. The location is at the north end of the apron. At this point, we were directed by council to investigate whether or not we could improve the surface. Originally, we anticipated maybe an improvement to include base rock and this supertrack pad. We had a contractor come out and look at options of that option as well as potentially cementing the pad location. And so 10,000 square feet of that kind of work in both scenarios, the contractor estimated the cost to be above $100,000. And so at that point, it basically is economically not viable to move forward with those improvements, with this being a short-term lease. This is a three-year base lease with two one-year options to extend. So at this point, regarding the surface of the location, it's our recommendation to move forward with just the native soil, and it will be maintained in a way that the weeds, weed abatement and mowing will keep it down from that standpoint. The other council direction was to meet with the fire marshal, which we did, and discussions with the fire marshal, there was no objection from a fire code standpoint for locating the hydrogen storage trailer there. So that's one of six pieces of equipment. All the equipment would be on trailers that, so they're all mobile. They all can be moved at a short notice. And in particular to the hydrogen, the, it is a Department of Transportation-approved hydrogen containment trailer, so the hydrogen is inside of that, so it's inside of protective tanks and inside the trailer. So at this point, that would conclude my brief report, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, Councilmember Burns, you pulled this item. Did you have questions?
They've been answered. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have, we don't open it again for public comment, we already did that. Okay. So then is there a motion to approve this item?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that's motion carries 4-0. All right. To the consent, we're going to move on to council business. The first item is 10.1, a resolution approving an amendment to San Benito County Council of Governments' Joint Powers Agreement. May we have the staff report?
Yes, so I do have on the line, and Jen and Paul will be pulling up, Benue Abraham from the executive director of the COG, along with her counsel, Mr. Osman Mufti. We staff received this item after a vote of the COG. It is being circulated at each of the respective bodies, the county, San Juan Batista, and the city. We are this week. Next week, we'll be at the county, and at the time of publication, I did not have a confirmed date for San Juan. I know they're working with them. So if we could bring Ms. Abraham in, she's, looks like she's joining now as a panelist, and she can provide an update as well. Benue, the floor is yours. Just need to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, hi, good afternoon. We have our SB COG legal counsel, Osman Mufti, online, and he will be presenting this item.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so this item is coming you from the, with the recommendation from the SB COG Board of Directors. At the last board meeting held in September, a recommendation was made to amend the JPA agreement to extend the terms of the representatives of each member agency to four years from the one-year term. The COG had been discussing this extensively for several months prior, due to the, it stems from a retreat that was held in March. There was substantive discussion on the challenges faced by many of the COG representatives and the board in general, in terms of the learning curve associated with COG responsibilities and transportation law in general, and understanding funding opportunities, the length of implementation of transportation projects as well. And additionally, the recommendation was based off of, there was a recent VTA audit report, which also identified the benefits of increased tenures on transportation boards. The audit report was released back in June of this year, and it recommended increasing board terms for experience and stability. The report also noted that it takes a director about two years on average to become comfortable and effective in their role. So with all that information, the COG board voted unanimously to recommend to its member agencies to adopt an amendment to the JPA agreement, modifying the terms of COG appointees from one year to four years. So that's what's before the city today.
And Mayor, if I could weigh in?
Yes.
When I was doing agenda review for this item, I had a question regarding that four years, and then had a subsequent meeting with Mr. Mufti and Ms. Abraham and the city manager. Because of that four-year designation, my question was related to the term of our mayor, even though there's a four-year term on the ballot coming up. And I recommended language to say just the term of the office of each director and alternate shall be the length of term of their time on whatever board they sit on. Mr. Mufti then sent language for 3.2.3 to me and Ms. Abraham and the city manager that states, and I'll tell you the difference when I get to the red line. The language currently before you is except for the term of office of the initial directors and alternates, which shall expire June 30, 1975, the term of office of each director and alternate of the board of directors as of the effective date of this amendment shall be four years until the appointment and qualification of a successor. Any vacancy that is created as a result of removal for cause, comma, and then this is the added language by Mr. Mufti, a director no longer serving in office of the appointing member body, comma, and then we go back to the regular language before you, or resignation from the appointing member body shall be filled for the unexpired term by appointment by the appointing body whose office has become vacant. Replacement directors shall serve until the scheduled expiration of the four-year term of the board member that they replace. So my concern was directed to the term when we have a mayoral term of two years, and so that was language also proposed by Mr. Mufti to, I guess, address my concern and question brought up during agenda review.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do we have questions from council? No? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Can you remind me who sits on that COG board again?
The, the member agencies or the individuals?
The individuals. Maybe Benue can help you out.
Right. Okay, so the, I can, Benue can jump in as well if I forget. From the city of Hollister is Mayor Casey and Councilmember Morales. From the county of San Benito is Director Kuro and Director Sotelo. And from the city of San Juan is Mayor Freels.
Okay. And have you spoken to the county about this? Or have you presented to the county? Have you had conversations with the county about it?
This is scheduled to be, this is agendized for, at the next county board of supervisors meeting on, next week on the 23rd.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, City Attorney, have you spoken to the county and asked them if this is legally allowed?
I have not had conversations with the county.
Nor have I.
Okay, thank you. So the language added, City Attorney, essentially, this is my understanding of it, if Mayor Casey is voted out of office this election, Councilmember Dolores Morales, who was appointed by Mayor Casey, could not be removed from COG by the new mayor. Is that correct?
That's my understanding of what COG is presenting.
Doesn't that put us, or the future council or future councils, in a legal bind?
I don't know if it's a legal bind so much as you are binding the hands of a future council. My concern was more around the four-year term language, because the voters haven't yet decided on a four-year mayoral term. And so that's, that's where my concern was. The other concern is, I mean, that you bring up, is you are binding the hands of a future council potentially.
Yeah, and you said at the Fire Protection Committee that that wasn't allowed. So why would it not be allowed at the Fire Protection Committee, but it would be allowed?
So I don't, I don't represent COG, and I, and I didn't draft this language. I can only advise from a city attorney perspective to this body that it's not recommended that you bind the hands of a future council like this, but I have no control over COG. Yeah, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, and the Fire Committee are bylaws. It's not a, you know, it's just a committee spun out with bylaws, whereas the JPA, they have an agreement that forms the JPA itself, and that's why it recirculated back up this way.
I understand, but it is legally binding the hands of the future council, just as you stated it would do at the Fire Committee, is it not?
Well, as far as sitting on a COG board under COG rules, yeah, I mean, I don't have any control over what they do as a JPA, because I don't represent them, but Mr. Mufti does.
Okay.
Maybe he could perhaps answer that question.
I think I got my answers. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Do we have public comment?
Gotcha. There are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Bringing it back for discussion, any comments or?
Madam Mayor.
Okay. Can we, Mr. Burns, did you want, have anything?
Yes, Mayor, I do have some comments.
Do you want?
Sure, thank you. I understand the practical benefit to a four-year term, but it just does not seem realistic to me, given the fact that nobody on this council currently would be eligible to sit on this. And so it would absolutely require either a newly, well, it would require a newly elected council member or mayor, and only the mayor, assuming that it was a, the term of the mayor changed from two to four years. And so I could absolutely support a two-year term. To me, that seems realistic. I just don't think a four-year term seems realistic. And as much as it frustrates me, I don't want to lock down the future council with the decision that could have ramifications. So I just can't support it at this time with a four-year term. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, this is. Yeah, this is not only unethical, but completely illegal. It is a political power grab by the mayor, who is up for election to make sure that...
Point of order. You don't get to speak for me, sir. You don't get to claim things about me.
Okay, you're claiming a point of order.
I'm claiming a point of personal privilege. You are insulting me by saying things like this. You need to...
You're trying to change the rules so you can keep somebody appointed on a very influential committee...
This was a cog board decision.
When you're not in office, when you're voted out of office. That is unethical, illegal, and you can't silence me for speaking my truth. It's wrong, and you should not be allowed to do that, just as many of the things that you've done here have been wrong. Shame on you.
Okay, it's okay. Just leave it. Are you through?
I'm done. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Well, first, to clarify, this was not my decision. This was a unanimous decision by the Council of Governments Board, which is five people. So claiming that it's me is just posturing politically.
If I may?
No, I'm speaking now. As Mr. Mufti, our attorney, has said, this is not an illegal thing.
Yeah, I can address that even more. This is not illegal, the four-year term. I have several JPAs with elected officials on it with four-year terms that are in the JPA agreements themselves. People get reelected, and that's why the language, or they, or they're not reelected. That's why the language until the appointment or qualification of a successor is in the document. What that is intended to address is if someone happens to be appointed with two years left on their term, and they don't have, they don't get reelected onto the same appointing body, once a successor is appointed, the member body can then appoint anyone else from their council to that entity. So the four years has no relation or link to the appointing member's term on their appointing body. This is, in other JPAs across the state, so it's not illegal.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to clarify, since I do sit on the cog board, that this has been discussed for quite a while. And the reason it was brought forward is because there was a finding by the VTA that it does actually take more than a year, close to two years, to really get up to speed. There's a lot of different funds. There's agencies like Caltrans and the VTA. There's a lot to learn. It's a big learning curve. And when you're changing council folks or supervisor folks every year, you can't get that cohesiveness. And a lot of the projects that happen are multi-year projects. So it can impede being able to get work done on cog. And that was the thinking behind it, and that's why it was proposed. I think that's all I really want to say about it, unless anyone else has anything. Do you have any further comments, or can we?
No, I'd better be quiet.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this item? I will second it. Can we take a vote, please?
Do I real call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
And Mayor Casey?
Yes.
Motion fails 2-2 with Vice Mayor Resendez and Councilmember Burns opposing.
Move that one.
All right. We are going to move on to...
Can I ask a question to the attorney?
Yes, go ahead.
On a 2-2 split like this, what's the recourse to bring this back up? If I wanted to bring this back up, and if I voted a no, would I be able to bring it back up for the next one?
Okay, so the rule of finality, let me go through this. You're going to have to give me a second. Under Rosenberg's Rules of Order, let me find it.
You can actually just email...
Someone from, and I'll get the exact language, but if you were in the losing end of that, you cannot make a motion for reconsideration. It would need to be the other side opposing it. But let me get the exact language. So the motion to reconsider, this is from Rosenberg's Rules of Order that the council follows, and I'm going to read this section to council. There is a special and unique motion that requires a bit of explanation all by itself, the motion to reconsider. A tenant of parliamentary procedure is finality. After vigorous discussion, debate, and a vote, there must be some closure to the issue. And so after a vote is taken, the matter is deemed closed, subject only to reopening if a proper motion to consider is made and passed. A motion to reconsider requires a majority vote to pass like other garden variety motions. But there are two special rules that apply only to the motion to reconsider. First is the matter of timing. A motion to reconsider must be made at the meeting where the item was first voted upon. A motion to reconsider made at a later time is untimely. The body, however, can always vote to suspend the rules and by a two-thirds majority, allow a motion to reconsider to be made at another time. Second, a motion to reconsider may be made only by certain members of the body. Accordingly, a motion to reconsider may be made only by a member who voted in the majority on the original motion. If such a member has a change of heart, he or she may make the motion to reconsider. Any other member of the body, including a member who voted in the minority of the original motion, may second the motion. If a member who voted in the minority seeks to make the motion to reconsider, it must be ruled out of order. The purpose of this rule is finality. If a member of the minority could make a motion to reconsider, then the item could be brought back to the body again and again, which would defeat the purpose of finality. If the motion to reconsider passes, then the original matter is back before the body, and a new original motion is in order. The matter may be discussed and debated as if it were on the floor for the first time.
So if the, there is no majority, and it fails?
2-2 fails.
Right.
The motion failed.
Okay.
So someone who voted against it would need to make the motion for reconsideration because they had a change of position on it.
Or what about the missing councilperson?
No, because she's not here, and a motion for reconsideration is about timing. Needs to occur today.
I know what you're saying. I'm just asking to clarify that.
Okay.
So we're going to move on to item 10.2, a resolution executing a master lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. We have staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Casey Astorga, the city's Administrative Services Director. We also have William By, the Public Works Director, tonight available should we have any questions about this master lease agreement. And we have, for the bulk of the presentation tonight, we have staff from Enterprise Fleet Management Team. And with that, I'll hand it over to Sophia after I introduce a recommendation. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Tonight's recommendation is for the city council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a master lease agreement and all necessary amendments in a form approved by the city attorney with Enterprise Fleet Management, and just a couple of clarifying points to that recommendation tonight. So tonight's recommendation is to enter into an agreement with Enterprise, not to purchase any specific vehicles. Moving forward, if the agreement were authorized, the purchase of those vehicles would occur through the approval process from the city manager's office in align with the city's adopted budget. So tonight is essentially just establishing that business relationship with Enterprise. And with that, I'll hand it over to Sophia to do her presentation.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mayor Casey, Vice Mayor Resendez, and city council members. My name is Sophia Casada. I am an account executive with Enterprise Fleet Management, and I am joined today by Brooke Harris, our Fleet Strategy Manager, and Kelsey Mishlig, our local account manager. We have been working with William and Casey to implement Fleet Management for the City of Hollister, which I'm excited to share with you today. So we are extremely familiar in the government space. We have over 200 government clients here in California alone, a few of which are here on the screen. They partner with us because of our flexibility with electrification and refreshment of the fleet. They are able to do more with less with their capital budget and decrease their operating budget. We have also been awarded the Sourcewell contract, which the City of Hollister is able to piggyback off of. So a brief background of your fleet. This program encompasses 112 vehicles, 41% of which are 10 years or older. Older vehicles tend to have higher maintenance and fuel costs, outdated safety features, and tend to be more unreliable. Backup cameras have been mandated by the NHTSA since 2018, and 59 of your vehicles do not have them. You will also see on the graph sporadic purchasing patterns, ranging anywhere from zero to 18 acquisitions year over year, making it very hard to budget for. The graph here on the screen is Fleet Management 101. With your aging fleet, you are currently operating on the right side of the graph, not capturing equity, experiencing catastrophic maintenance and fuel degradation, running cars with safety concerns, opening your exposure. Our goal, as the nation's leader in buying and selling vehicles, is to use our data to find the right time to replace, where your vehicles still hold a significant resale value. Maintenance is limited to routine maintenance, such as oil changes and tire rotations, and fuel technology is still new. The objective of a partnership with Enterprise Fleet Management would be to reduce city resources needed to manage and maintain the fleet while providing a proactive, sustainable, consistent plan for replacement. By utilizing our open-ended equity lease structure, the city is able to acquire more vehicles than you typically would while avoiding large capital outlay. This enables a newer fleet, which results in reduced operating expenses and improved safety. Unlike a typical dealership lease, there are no mileage over fees and no wear and tear fees. You will be assigned a dedicated account manager, Kelsey Mishlig, who is here today, to help with proactive planning for the fleet, outlined in our 10-year savings model. The model is outlined here on the screen. There are a lot of numbers, so I want to focus on a few key pieces. The first of which, the fleet will be fully leased within a five-year period, taking on a phase-in approach. The average cycle will be moved from 10 years old to five years old, allowing the equity of those leased vehicles to offset your fleet expenses. The maintenance will be fixed throughout the term of the vehicle, and you will see a 34% savings from what you're currently doing today. Over the next 10 years, the City of Hollister will see $450,000 in savings by switching to an Enterprise Fleet Management program. In conclusion, the fleet plan will provide consistency in budget and efficiencies in operations that the city doesn't currently have today. You will be supported by your local account manager, Kelsey, assisting in long-term fleet strategy and lowering operating expenses, as well as our fleet strategy manager, Brooke, to capitalize on incentives for the best purchase price and strategy for resale. Your fleet will be fully refreshed within five years. You will see $450,000 in savings within the next 10 years, and $45,000 in savings every year after. The City of Hollister, partnered with Enterprise Fleet Management, will have a flexible, proactive, sustainable fleet plan. Thank you very much. Is there any questions?
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. So can you speak briefly about the maintenance part of this process?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So there's essentially two big buckets of maintenance. One, we do have an existing fleet team as well, so this is not going to have any negative impact to our existing employees. If nothing else, it provides some opportunities for our operation. Two-fold, and I'll get started, and William, if you want to chime in as well. So they're part of the Enterprise Fleet Management program. I've experienced in a couple of previous agencies with this exact program, and there are assets built into our community, our broader community, including the auto repair shops within our community. So part of the Enterprise Fleet Management program, there is a maintenance package built into that. So for some of the routine maintenance, I'll just summarize it as oil changes, some regular maintenance like that, we're able to partner with our local auto dealerships and have them do that work, and then they would invoice Enterprise directly, which concurrently frees up the time of our existing staff to focus on the specialized vehicles, the fire engines, the specialized public work vehicles, et cetera. So we're building capacity while also having a partnership in our community as well.
Perfect. And then I presume that this doesn't factor in our police vehicles, correct?
It could. It certainly could. So they have that specialty code three ready. There's relationship through Enterprise, and then the third party that could outfit those vehicles as well.
Nice. I'll save my comments, but two thumbs up.
Do you have anything? Councilmember?
Yeah, I have a question. So you brought up the, taking it out to the local dealership. Are we going to be in line? Is that going to back us up for having vehicles? Are we going to have extra vehicles to replace those ones while they're in?
I don't think that'll have any negative impact to how quickly we can service a vehicle, whether that's the timing of having our own fleet staff address it. If it is something that we can do quickly, but we do have expanded capacity right now currently where they would handle the work, but also the administrative side, where they would manage the intake and then the invoicing, et cetera. So hopefully, we have some process improvements there.
So I'd like to, my only other question is to all the staff is, how come we didn't do this before? But thank you, guys. Excuse me.
It does include other repair shops, not just the dealerships, correct? It's other local repair shops. So if the dealership was backed up, and it was going to be two days before they could get it in, we can go to a different repair shop, and it's all handled through Enterprise Fleet.
Yeah. I guess, maybe I'm the only one that's ever taken their car to an oil place and had to bring it back again and again, so.
No, I doubt you were.
So the only other question is, is how come we didn't do this before? Where were you guys?
Well, I think one of the items, as Sophia summarized before, there's a lot of concepts and planning that would come to play. As the automobile industry evolves, there's different safety features that become relevant. There's different requirements from the state of California. The California Air Resources Board are coming to local governments with some requirements there. So that's why we want to have this as a tool to make sure that the city has some dexterity in making fleet decisions. And you see one of the concepts that was presented earlier. How do we get into this ability to have the latest and greatest vehicles to, one, meet our operational needs, but also there's reporting requirements? There's requirements to go to EVs by a certain timeline for local governments. So this gives us more tools in our toolbox. And then through the concepts with Enterprise Fleet Management, they get to monitor our existing fleet, identify when there's a sweet spot potentially for turning over that fleet, making sure that we always have the best resources for our team here.
And that's why I want to thank staff for coming up with this stuff. You guys are doing a good jobs.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do. First off, thank you for the presentation, and like my colleagues, I'm pretty excited about this item. So a couple of things. Number one, I'm mostly interested and excited about the EV portion of it. Like, I know there's not a lot of models out there, but I'm just wondering, are we going to have like all our trucks, all our cars? I would like to eventually have them move over to EVs. Is that something that we can do?
Yeah, it's actually a requirement from the state at some point to eventually get to there. There's a couple of different options, and it's not immediate, but I think it's by 2035 or something like that to basically have all local governments to alternative fuel, not just electric, but other alternative fuels, clean fuels.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to see us move a little bit more aggressive on that, because I do think that we can potentially save more money by going EV and not being so dependent on fossil fuels, number one. So I personally would like for us to start moving in that direction if we're going to take on this contract and get all of our vehicles EV, and even possibly look at maybe some grant opportunities to put some EV charging stations here at City Hall, or, you know, partnering with different companies. So that's what I'm really excited about, because it's, again, cost savings, number one, it's environmentally friendly, number two. And the technology right now is changing so rapidly with EV. I like the idea of leasing it, because I think they're going to come out with new technology, and then we could potentially just switch out a fleet for the new technology. And then I don't really want to like keep the vehicles. I think there's an option to sell them back, right? So I like that. Number two, how are we going to transition over from our existing fleet or our existing cars that we have to moving over with Enterprise? And did you take that into consideration when talking about the costs?
Absolutely. So I think the model that was presented by Sophia considers that transition, and they help us with long-range planning and different concepts based on our operational needs. One of the elements of the service that's included in the agreement would be, I'll call them surplusing tasks as well. So whether that's a vehicle that's through the lease program or a vehicle that the city couldn't, currently owns, we can partner with Enterprise and their global branding to monitor and plan for the resale market to help with that transition. Because part of it is a budget stability tool to make sure that we are identifying our needs long-term, and through Enterprise, we can work often directly with a manufacturer to make sure it's the exact vehicle that we want to maximize the government discounts and to make sure that we are timing it correctly so it aligns with the city budget process as well, not just acquiring vehicles, but also surplusing vehicles at the same time.
Do we have any comments from the panel? Do we have any comments from the public?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or deliberation? Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. So actually, our chief of police has been sliding lately, so I'm going to put him on the spot for a second here. And so Chief, it's my understanding that in Monterey County, and I think it might be Greenfield, didn't their police department just go to all Tesla police cars?
I have no information about that.
Okay, okay. So I don't know. Anybody in the audience have some of that? Because I would love to see our police department, because my sense is they put the most miles on, but they also need things that are going to be reliable, practical, and usable. And so, but I'd like to know more about that. I'd also like to know more about grants out there because the future is now, and I think this is a great move by city staff. I mean, we keep seeing new innovations, at least to us, that may have existed because of the skill set of the new administration to bring these things to us. And so, Casey, I don't know. It seems like you're the guy that has the knowledge, and so, any thoughts?
Well.
I'll divert my boss, yeah.
I was just going to say, in regard to the other two cities, I will be attending a meeting with them this week, so I could just ask them and send something back to council so I can get an update on that and see how that's gone, and if it has, how it's worked out for them, and, you know, any challenges along the way that they didn't foresee. And so we can put a memo back to you.
Thank you.
And we've also had conversations with our fire department, as well as their Tahoe's in general. What could that look like through a program like Enterprise?
Nice, perfect.
Awesome.
And I will just add that we have, Enterprise Fleet Management has helped the City of Pasadena's police vehicles be completely electric. They are willing to take phone calls if needed.
Maybe it was Pasadena I was thinking, wishfully thinking it was Greenfield. Thanks.
If we don't have more discussion, then did someone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four zero. We're going to move on to item 10.3, Consideration of Action Regarding a Resolution Recognizing and Supporting the Hollister Fire Department for Their Exceptional Service, Dedication, Heroism, and Commitment to the Safety and Well-Being of the City and Its Residents. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor. I'll give the staff report. So as before you is the resolution as read by the mayor. If adopted, it would do five things specifically. One, recognize and commend the Hollister Fire Department for their significant contributions to public safety, community welfare, and the rich history of the city. It shows council extending their heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the department's selfless dedication, exceptional service, community engagement, and ongoing efforts to enhance both public safety and the storied, proud, and patriotic fabric of the city. The city council would be acknowledging the critical role of the Hollister Fire Department in ensuring community safety and emergency preparedness, and recognizes the importance of maintaining a department that can effectively meet the evolving needs of the growing community. The council would commit to supporting the Hollister Fire Department's mission through thoughtful consideration of departmental needs, including training, equipment, and personnel as part of a comprehensive and responsible approach to public safety resource allocation. And the city council would be resolving that in the event the current fire agreements with the county of San Benito or the city of San Juan Batista are terminated, and with the exception of disciplinary discharge of employees, it will take any and all necessary action to ensure that fire personnel will not be subjected to staffing reductions below existing position allocations as they exist at the time of issuance of the resolution. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I do have some questions. So I have some questions about why are we particularly doing this just for the fire department? And why are we not doing this for the police department, for public works, for parks and recs? How come we're doing this just for the fire department at this point?
I don't have an answer for that. This is a council item brought forward by the council.
Okay, so the city council put this on the agenda?
This was an item brought forth by the city council, correct?
Okay. So I've got some questions in regards to that. Is there any legal issues? I see that with number five, again, I'm talking about binding legally future councils here, there's language here that says that if the current fire agreements of San Benito County, San Juan Batista are terminated, essentially that we're not going to lay off any firefighters. Do you see potential legal issues with that?
So I will not disclose attorney-client privileged information that has been shared with council, but I will say what I've said in past meetings, these are the city manager's employees, and that's the only addition I have.
Okay. So, yeah, that's something that I'm concerned about. Why is it that we're doing it just for the fire department, Madam Mayor?
We had the discussion among the council, and the council made the decision to move forward with this resolution, so.
Okay. Because I value all of our departments, and I just, I have a problem with the equity that we're just doing it specifically just for the fire department. And then, yeah, does it seem like a legal precedent? Do you see any issues with legal precedents or with other agents, or sorry, other departments not getting this type of recognition as well?
And so, again, I've advised the council in an attorney-client privileged communication, so I'm not going to disclose those communications. All I will again say is that these are the city manager's employees.
Okay, well, I do, so I'll speak to that in my closing remarks. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Do we have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Is there any further deliberation?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so again, just going to reiterate some of my questions here. I think that there's a question of equity. I personally think that it's campaign season, it's political, we've got people running for office here that have been endorsed by the fire department, and there's promises made to the fire department. But I don't think it's right, and I don't think it's fair. We need to recognize all of the departments, all of the public safety, and not treat anybody different just because they decided to endorse your campaign. Number two, I think that it sets bad precedent, not only within the culture of the staff of our city, but there's going to be legal ramifications. You're essentially binding and tying the hands of future councils again, so you can repay favors of people that have decided to endorse you. That is not how we should be doing politics here, and that's what I think is really going on here. So for those reasons, and those reasons alone, I cannot support this tonight. Thank you.
Any comments? Any further comments?
Resolution of the city council of the City of Hollister, recognizing and supporting the Hollister Fire Department for their exceptional service, dedication, heroism, and commitment to the safety and well-being of the city of its residents. Why wouldn't we? Man, you know what? Fire truck goes down Seventh Street a lot, and it's one of the main ways, and it's like, I think of all the people they're going and helping. Their situation, while that truck is on the way, and these people are in these panic modes, someone's dying, someone's hurting. Why wouldn't we recognize that? Why do we have to politicize it and say, hey, well, what about over there? No, these guys are the ones that show up. Man, these ones are waiting for them, and they're paramedics. Cops, yeah, they're out there. This is just about saying, hey, good job. Good job, fire department.
Any further? Okay, well, before we take a vote, I'm going to make just two comments. Number one, the continued political posturing here is unnecessary, and honestly, our fire department, you know, is different than most departments. Most people don't run into burning buildings to save people, and we have already recognized that from the grand jury reports that we are severely understaffed. So I don't see, I don't see us laying anyone off. And unfortunately, there were remarks made at, earlier on, with regard to the fire contract termination clause being enacted, that firefighters were going to be laid off and that our city was in dire straits. And this created a lot of uncertainty for our firefighters. So I firmly support doing this to show them that we do support them, and that's all I have to say. So I think we're ready for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you abstaining?
I'm a no. You didn't call for the no's.
All right. All those opposed?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion carries three to one. We're going to move on to 10.4, Consideration of Amendments to the City Council Travel Policy. Let me get the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Casey Storga, City's Admin Services Director, presenting the item tonight. A bit of background and the recommendation to start with. So staff is recommending that the city council receive a report tonight regarding the city council travel policy and provide direction to staff regarding possible amendments to that policy, including the possible introduction of pooled travel funds. If there are changes desired, the city council can adopt a resolution tonight and provide necessary changes within that travel policy. Some background here, the city council travel policy specific to the governing board was adopted in June of 2023. Then in August of '24, the city council directed staff to explore options for pooled travel funds, including looking at best practices, and those funds would be shared by the collective governing body. Tonight, staff will present concepts for those pooled travel funds, as well as the city council to provide direction regarding possible amendments to that policy. Some considerations while evaluating whether or not to amend the travel policy, we are going to be talking about the fiscal year '24, '25 council travel budgets. We'll use this as our example. The current budget has $5,000 each per council member, or a grand total of $25,000 in travel funds for the city council. While we will be discussing that in concept with the fiscal year '24, '25 budget numbers, the travel funding does not roll forward every year. It's part of, it's an element of the city's annual budget process where there's a recommendation from staff and then presented to the city council, and the draft resolution should reflect that element of the process. When reviewing the different pooled funding concepts that I'll present in a couple slides here, the city council will have to decide on whether or not they have a preference, one, to amend, and then how to amend. So the different varieties could be all council members receive the same amount of funding, the mayor in their position would receive more funding because of their opportunity to serve the city at large, and potentially the mayor and vice mayor to receive more funding because not only does the mayor represent the city at large, the vice mayor oftentimes will fail in whenever that the mayor is otherwise unavailable. So those are three considerations, but also that bottom bullet point, you would also have to consider whether or not you would have a larger pool or a smaller pool of shared funds, and we'll see some examples here in the next couple slides. So again, these examples use '24, '25 budgeted numbers, and we'll see the three different varieties here. So you see kind of the orange, the blue, and the green side, and if you go, oh, you can't really see them on the screen there. So there, I'll paint a picture with my words. So at the bottom of the screen, there's different varieties of choosing the larger pool versus smaller pool. In the, in the orange example, we talked about a pool of $5,000 would equate to all council members getting the same $4,000 amount, which again captures that $25,000 grand total. In the next one, in the blue section, it talks about a larger pool now at $10,000, where you'd have every other council member getting $3,000, again equating to $25,000 grand total. And then the green example, it talks about a pool at $15,000 with a grand total of $25,000, where every council member in that example is getting $2,000. And I think for the next example, where the mayor position would get more, again, going from, we'll go one previous slide. There we go. Where the smaller pools, all the way on the left side in this example, at $4,500 in the pool, and the mayor position would get $4,500, while every other council member would get $4,000. In that blue section, the pooled amount increases to seven, $7,000, a slightly larger pool. The mayor position in this example would get $4,000. Every other council member would get $3,500. Again, that grand total of 25 does not change. And then the green columns show the larger pool where the mayor would get $5,000, which is currently the current max in the budget. Every district would get $2,500, again with that grand total of 2,500. I think if you just delete that bottom sentence, there we go. And then in the example of where the mayor and vice mayor would get more, again, going left to right, the larger, the smaller pool on the left in the orange, the mayor would receive $5,000 in this example, the vice mayor would receive $4,000, and then every other council member would get $3,000, a smaller pool of $7,000, again, left to right, the middle one in blue, the mayor would get four, the vice mayor, three, every other council member, two, and a moderate-sized pool of $12,000. Or in the green example, the mayor would receive $3,000, vice mayor, $2,500, all other council members, $1,500, and the larger pool in this example at 2,500, or 25,000, excuse me, again, that same maximum that's included in the fiscal year '24, '25 budget. So tonight, for the possible actions as presented, the city council, if you did want to amend the travel policy, the two bullet points in blue there, so the city council would have to make a determination that the travel policy, travel policy should be amended to establish pooled travel funds, and then including that provision that with subsequent budgets, the city manager would make a recommendation for that funding level for all city council travel funds, including the pooled travel funds, as part of the annual budget process there. So if the city council were to make that amendment and change the travel policy tonight, they can provide direction to the city manager on how to pool the funds for the current fiscal year. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Questions? Vice Mayor, you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what are we currently budgeted at? Is it $25,000 as well?
The current budget this year is $25,000 in total or $5,000 per council member.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
So I guess when I was thinking about the pooled funds, I was thinking those that don't use them would be utilized by others who might travel more to Sacramento or whatever. Is this the only way to go about it, by taking away from other people's funds to create a pool? But I guess I just wasn't thinking of it in those terms, but is it done differently at all? Or are there other ways to do it?
So I think there would be an option, I apologize for speaking over you. There could be an option to either do that upfront at the beginning of the fiscal year as you adopt the budget, to have essentially the example that's in '24, '25, where everybody, everybody has $5,000 if we're using the current numbers. At that point, any given council member could elect to make a recommendation through the budget process to defer their funds into the pool. At that point, we could keep everyone at their status quo and then establish the pool at that point. There's a lot of discretion to council here, essentially setting that policy, but it's based on the will of the council.
Gotcha.
The other thing I.
I'm sorry, did you want to ask?
The other thing I was going to say is because the vice mayor is, it's just a rotating thing. It's like, do we, why would they get an extra, any extra money? It doesn't make sense to me. If there's a reason, let me know.
So the reason is that the vice mayor could stand in the shoes of the mayor if the mayor were otherwise unavailable to attend a meeting, whether that may be.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think I have questions at this point. Do we have any public comment?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay, so we could bring it back for deliberation. Does it need any comments at all? Councilmember Burns, are you shaking your head? Yes.
I am. Could you bring the first slide back that was just increasing the mayor's budget and either, I think it was potentially maintaining the council members' number?
So I think if we go, this is the example where the mayor position would receive more, and all other council members would receive a standard amount across the board, an equal amount.
Right, right. So first of all, I agree with Councilmember Perez that I don't see a real need to increase the vice mayor's budget, and you mentioned if they had to go to a meeting, but if they went to a meeting anyway, and their out-of-pocket expenses would still be reimbursed, correct?
That's correct.
So this really shouldn't play into that in that case?
Only in the event of the council wanted to, depending on the relationships. It's not only for the current sitting council, but future opportunities as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Burns, can I ask a clarifying question? Were you saying the reimbursements would count towards this?
Or would not?
They do count towards this. So any reimbursements related to the travel is all packaged in one?
So whether it be going up to Sacramento, or whether it be going to San Jose for just a routine meeting?
Yes, that's how we, if it's a reimbursement, we would bill it out of here. We don't typically see it a lot, honestly.
Yeah, that's the thing.
But we would bill it against here. So what, what the idea would be like, if I look at the green one here to the right, if Councilmember Perez in District One said, I want to go to this. if Councilmember Perez in District One said, "I want to go to this," and we'd look at it and we say, "Well, it's 3,200." We would bring the request forward and say, "This is 2,500 from his line and $700 out of the pool." And then that, and then you would vote on that and take action, and then the, he would be at zero for his district funds, and then at the pool would be $700 less. Then he could come again and say, "I'd like to go to something else." At that point, it would be all from the pool, if the pool can sustain it.
Right. So, so I also can align with what the mayor was saying, as in, I, I'm the, I'm the classic example. I, I'm rolling into four years on council, and I've never gone anywhere on the city dime. And so, under today's money amount, that would have been 20 grand. That could have been part of that pool fund, and, and I certainly don't have a problem with that. You know, and I think it gives the council members some discretion, but it also locks down the budget, I think, a little better for the city. So, so I, I will say I could go either with the, with the mayor gets a little more, and the other council members, including the vice mayor, get a, a consistent number, or I could go with, everybody gets a consistent number, and they can have my money. Thank you.
Any other comments, sir?
Go green.
I, you know, I, I know that Councilmember Morales is not here, and she had been the one who had advocated for this, because I know she does do a lot of, you know, meetings and, and travels to Sacramento a bit. I, I mean, even just the very basic, the orange level is, I would be okay with. I don't see. I think it gives some flexibility, so if someone does travel more, there's that pooled, almost, almost $5,000 that could be drawn on. So I think it gets us there. I'm not, I'm not concerned about much bigger numbers, for me. I travel a bit, but honestly, I haven't been asking for reimbursement for them, so. Anyway, I'd be fine, I'm fine with any of it, whatever the council is, is leaning towards. I do like the flexibility, though. I, I think that's good for people who do, do, you know, go to more conferences or go to, to travel for meetings. So do we have any suggestions or
I see a good one.
direction for the city manager?
One option, Mayor, I've heard you guys go back and forth. One option is, you know, that you could, if we go back over there, Paul, if you could bring that up there. So I would keep in mind that if it, pretty much in today's dollars, would travel, if there's an air, if there's a flight, depending on conference registration, you're around $3,500 to, depending on if you're going out of state, it could be, you know, $4,000. So the one to the far left, pretty much gets you, you know, one and a half, maybe two, depending on if, if you're driving, if it's close. You know, if it's in Sacramento and you choose to drive, most people aren't going to fly to Sacramento. That may get you two, and then you could, if you're over, you could lean into the pool a little bit, so.
Yes, Councilmember Burns.
So then perhaps we could, we could go orange, and with the option that if a council member wants to forfeit or donate, whatever, you pick the right word, give their travel or any, any travel money in addition to what they're going to use into that pool for any of the council members. I, I mean, that, that to me could work, because I, I've heard you say that, you know, if, we're going to be upside down if we don't at least go with the orange category based on what your knowledge is.
Yeah, possibly. It just depends on what you're going to, but you could be in a situation where your first one is pushing you over and you're asking to lean into the pool.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't, yeah, so, so that would be my thought. Thank you.
I, I agree with Councilmember Burns. I like that flexibility of being able to give your funds of, you know, into the pool if you're not going to use them, so I would support that. I would be okay with the orange with that caveat.
That's fine. I, I was just thinking that. You, you're invited to a lot of different.
I am, but you know, I don't want to take away from other people, because it, it lowers everyone else's down to 2,500, and that would limit them, and I wouldn't want to do that, so.
So Mayor, am I hearing, Paul, if you could go back one slide to Slide 7. The option here, if I'm hearing the same, the orange on the left there was four all the way across with a pool of five. So there's that one, or the one where the pool is 4,500 and the mayor is 4,500, so.
That's the one.
Yeah. We had that up on the screen, but I'm hearing not, I'm hearing keeping it even. I just want to make sure we're clear.
Which, which orange one are you?
Sorry, I didn't realize.
I was looking to increase the mayor's to five, and go back one slide, please, Paul.
There. Oh, no.
Is that back?
No, no. That's the first slide there, yeah.
That's everyone getting the same. So Councilmember Burns, if the mayor was getting five, then your, your, the rest of the council members and the pool would be at four.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that works, and then with the, with the addition that if a council member is not going to use all of theirs or none of theirs, then that just rolls into the pool. So that, i- in this example, that would increase the pool from five to nine, five to nine. And, and what it doesn't do is it doesn't add to a general fund increase in, in, in removal or deduction.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, too.
I'm fine with that.
So, so if I understand correctly, it would be to adopt a resolution to amend the city council travel policy, introducing pooled travel funds, using the orange example.
$4,000.
The mayor at $5,000, all other districts, and the pooled amount at $4,000 for grand total of 25.
Correct. But, but again, with the option for any unused monies to just be put in the pool for use?
Absolutely. All council members would retain that, that discretion throughout the year.
Yeah. Yeah, they could, they could request that we agendize that and put it on and just shift it over.
Perfect.
Sold.
So I think you've got direction then to bring it back.
Do we need a motion?
Are you asking for a motion? I thought it was just direction.
It's a motion, maybe to adopt a resolution, from what I understand, to amend the travel policy, to introduce the travel, the pooled travel funds.
That, that needs a motion. You're right, and it would be as, okay, stated by Councilmember Burns and the, and the city manager.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second.
Second.
Then can we, all those in favor?
Yes.
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 All those opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries three to one. Okay, we're going to go over any committee assignments. Any committees that you want to report out on, Councilmember Perez?
No, we already did the water district earlier. But that is, if I may say, that is interesting, the, the BFC system, just to give you a little information on, they want to raise it 15 feet, so that we can buy a portion of that 15 feet for our community for the future. That's what that's all about. That's it.
I don't have anything specifically, but did we want to just mention the upcoming town hall for the motorcycle rally? It's on the, I want to say the wrong date. I got a lot of dates floating around in my head right now.
The 29th.
29th, there you go. So that's coming on the 29th. It'll be a, the motorcycle rally ad hoc is holding a town hall. It'll be here at 6:30 on the 29th to discuss the motorcycle rally and, and talk about things that have worked in the past and, and brainstorm with the community, so hopefully some of you can come out. So we've got two sections left. We've got council reports and then requests for future agenda items. Is there any reports that people want to make? Councilmember Burns, did you have a report?
I, I do. I don't know that this rises to an agenda request, but I was contacted by one of the folks that live in Council District Four, and he was mentioning that there's been a consistent problem with the dusting of their homes. They actually back up the memorial park, and apparently when they go out and they, they disc the lands for the baseball diamonds, they get, and, and apparently this is, this is new to me, because this is a new part of my district with the re, re, re-distegrain that went on a couple of years ago. But anyway, apparently there's that kind of a challenge, and it's something that the city may have tried to address in the past, but apparently there are different organizations that rent those fields, and so it seems like there's a need for some degree of, of interaction with those different entities to ensure that they're, that they're conscientious about when they're getting close, they're, if they're kicking up dust from the diamonds, that, that's a problem. And so it, it would always be good to be a good neighbor, and as I understand it, the county owns the land, but we rent the land, or lease the land for those events. Is that true?
There are certain parts of the field that we rent, and I would just ask the city attorney to clarify on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm, I think, I think maybe I need the city clerk's help, too, but there's two remaining items on your agenda for regular session. It's council reports, and this is where council now fills out the form, and it comes before council. And then the city manager report. So my understanding is that you're on 11.2, and you had one member of council fill out a form.
Okay, so there's no reporting then anymore, is that correct?
It's typically reporting on items that are of interest to the community or to other members of the council, is the way this has been handled.
Okay, so we do that first, and then we address the agenda items. Okay, so any items of interest for the council or community?
I do have one.
Yes.
We have a, I'd like to close tonight in, in honor of John Van Urban. He's worked at the Seven Needle Foods for 30 years. He recently passed, and I'd like to close in honor of him tonight.
So I, I actually have a couple more questions, clarifying questions, because I don't know how to push these out. And, and so we've talked about one of the situations, we've talked about city manager, and we've actually walked one of the neighborhoods in Sunny Slope Village, where the sidewalks are becoming very problematic. How do I push that forward for a council conversation? Is that something I need to fill out a form on?
If you're asking for an item to come back to be able to discuss the cost of replacing that sidewalk or things such as that, that would typically require a form unless you're using your discretionary funds, but I'll turn it to the city manager if he has.
Yeah, I don't have $2 million, so I guess I'll have to bring that back.
I'll turn to the city manager for additional.
No, that is correct. So it would go through the form process. We would put it on there. It's basically replacing the, the round robin with the consensus. And so that form would go up similar to the one that we had presented tonight. There's a brief opportunity to make a comment and show the item that's on the form, and then a consensus is given. If we get the consensus, then we work to agendize that item and bring it back.
So then I guess my other alternative would be at the next council meeting to just come up to the dais, or I'm, I'm sorry, up to the podium. I presume I have that, that right to do as well?
As long as you make it clear, you're speaking as a member of the community and as a council member.
Because this seems very convoluted to me. And then also, while I'm still getting clarification, we also had a conversation about how we address the council's past policy on, the past policy, the, the, the past direction of policy to the administration for promotional, open, open promotional things, and I want to bring that forward, too. So is, either I have to fill out a form or I need to come to the podium. Is that correct?
Well, if you came to the podium, that doesn't mean it would become agendized. It would be just like a regular member of the public coming and making a comment. So in that capacity, you would be making a comment.
Okay.
Council would receive that comment, but to have the agendized, you would then fill out that form. So you may hear comments tonight that trigger a response, say, "I want to have the council agendize that and look into it." That's where we adopted the policy to have that form process and.
And, and so then again, if I wanted to, I, I'm just confused with this.
I think Councilmember Burns.
Just a minute. This seems like a very complicated process. I know filling out a form is pretty simple, but it just seems like it kicks it down the road longer and longer. And so if I wanted to propose abolishing that policy, I'd have to fill out a form to do that, too.
Correct. So.
I got you.
So what, what council's previous direction was, or comments, if I'm recalling correctly, was when you do that three thumbs up process, some council members feel like they're put on the spot for specific items when they want more information. So by filling out the form, you are given more information and time to consider whether it should become a future agenda item. It's simply replacing the thumbs up.
Correct, but that also extends it out at least a month.
Yes.
Got you. Thank you.
Not necessarily a month. We would, we would run it on that.
All right, so if, do we, do you have a council report out? Do you have an item for the public before we move on?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay, well, we're not there yet. I'm just taking council reports right now.
No, I was just going to, if I can make a point. Even if you go to the podium and you ask, you're going to have to fill out a form, so it just defeats the purpose.
Yeah, and if I could just clarify, when we receive the submission of the form, we place it on the agenda. So it wouldn't be four weeks until it came on the agenda. If it got the three thumbs up, then we would work and try to bring it back and have it agendized would be that four-week process. But this was a result of the efficient meetings, as well as being, like Mary had said, that we, we had received feedback that basically there's three thumbs up and not quite sure exactly what you're, you know, wanting more information on the three thumbs up before. This was also a way to, to provide staff with, with the ability to get the clarifying information as well, because the way that it was working before was a round robin. I'm searching for three thumbs up, and if, if I get it wrong, then that creates issues as well. And so this was a way that, that, that allowed the members of the council to see the request before making a full vote, to bring it back.
All right. Okay, so we're going to move on to the future agenda items, but before we do, I wanted to address the item that was submitted to our packet by Councilmember Rosendros. He has requested to agendize a matter that's already been before the council and has been responded to by our city attorney. Therefore, I am asserting an objection to consideration of this question and asking for a vote of the council on this. It's my understanding that this objection does not require a second, just a vote of the council. So I'd like to move forward with that. City clerk can do a roll call on this objection.
Oh, hold on a second.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. This isn't a motion to reconsider. This council has the ability to suspend the rules by four-fifths vote. Let me just make sure I'm understanding your request.
I don't think you are, but go ahead.
Okay. Council has this policy, and Jen can clarify the policy, where a council member can fill out the form. It's simply coming before council to say, "I give the thumbs up for it to be a future agenda item." I don't give the thumbs up to be a future agenda item. That's my understanding. Jen, if you want to clarify.
That, that is correct. This is similar to how it was done before. It's just there's a form instead of an item brought before.
Understand the process. So what I am asserting an objection to, my understanding is with Rosenberg's Rules of Order, you can assert an objection to consideration of this question. That's my understanding. It's something that can be voted on by council if we do not want to consider an item.
Well, I need to review the rules to even comment on that.
Okay.
You want to give me a second?
Sure.
Do you know where in the rules you saw that, Mayor?
It was in the packets that you handed out to us with Rosenberg's Rules of Order, but I don't have the specific item.
The 10.
I don't have the number, sorry, but it's in the, the booklets that you gave every council member.
Oh, for Brown Act. That's not Rosenberg's.
No, this is Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
Okay, Rosenberg's is a 10-page pamphlet found online.
Pamphlet.
Yeah, I just, we give a lot of tools, so you're going to have to give me some time to find this.
Sure.
I believe it's at the top of page seven, column two.
I, I, I still don't see that. Where are you reading, Jennifer?
It states, "Motion to object to the consideration of a question." Is that the section you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
At the top of page seven?
Page seven of the 10-page document. I believe it's page five of the actual Rosenberg Rules pamphlet.
Okay, I'm going to back up to the very beginning of what this. Okay, I'm going to back up to the very beginning of what this section is. To debate or not to bit, to debate. Motion to object to the consideration of a question. Normally such a motion is unnecessary since the objectionable item can be tabled or defeated straight up. So it could be defeated by the thumbs down. However, when members of a body do not even want an item on the agenda to be considered, then such a motion is in order. It is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote to pass, so all of you forfeits. Two-thirds is forfeits. Okay, so.
Madam Mayor.
Two-thirds is 66% or whatever.
Correct, so it's not a simple majority. What I'm saying is that's a super majority.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding because I thought 66% is, is, well, three quarters of a, of a council is 75%. So how is 66%?
Go ahead, Jen.
It's actually three and one-thirds members, so by parliamentary procedures, because two-thirds of five is, is three and one-thirds. And so it actually typically requires four of it.
Okay, I understand. So we can't do this then, so we'll have to what?
Well, you can do it. I don't imagine it's going to pass, or you could simply say thumbs down, thumbs up to this.
No, I've got some questions for the city attorney. Madam Mayor?
That's fine, go ahead.
Thank you. So if I'm following this correctly, the mayor attempted to use the Rosenberg Rules of Order to stop me from requesting the agenda item regarding Rick Perez that I put on the agenda tonight.
So council has adopted the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and one of the tools in there is a motion to object to the consideration of a question as read, and it requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
And because Councilmember Morales is not here tonight, she doesn't have the vote to do that, even though she thought.
I don't know. I don't know what the vote would be.
Okay, that's one thing. Second, if she tries to silence me in any way, shape, or form, like she just did right now, do I have the right to speak during public comment on this item?
I would say you can speak to any item on the agenda, and so for this one, it is an item that was on the agenda, so if any member of the public could speak to it.
Very well. I will be exercising that right if the mayor attempts to silence me again.
And you would need to make clear you're speaking as a member of the public.
I know. Thank you so much for the reminder. Appreciate it. Can we move on?
I have a question for the city attorney. So if an item is being asked to be agendized that we have already addressed as a council and you have already responded to as a city attorney, what do we have to do? Because I, my understanding is we don't readdress items that have already been addressed. What is the procedure for that?
There is, under Rosenberg's Rules of Order, the ability to suspend the rules, and I read that section earlier, when we were talking about a motion for reconsideration. So the council can place this on the agenda if it so chooses and look at doing a motion for reconsideration as part of it. That would actually be necessary, or a majority of council could vote thumbs down, it's not going on the agenda. This simply replaces your thumbs up, thumbs down process.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you. And my question for you, city attorney, since this is the first time we're doing this, how does the process work? Other than just voting thumbs up, thumbs down, how does the process work?
Jen?
So the, similar to what the city attorney has already said, this is an item coming forward, um, similar to how any member of the council could previously bring up an item. That's why it got included in the packet. It was received by the deadline. And so at this time, the council can, this item is on the agenda, the council can make the determination of whether or not they want to add it to a future agenda. Um, it's, as city attorney has said, thumbs up, thumbs down. It's, it's up to you and how you want to handle it, if you want it on a future agenda item, as, on a future agenda or not.
What I would like, Madam City Clerk, is to not have my speech silenced. So if I'm not allowed to speak up here as a sitting elected official, because this process is new to us, right, then I want to exercise that right at the podium. I hope that makes it clear, um, moving forward as to what we'd, what I would consider, what I would like to do, okay?
And any item can, on the agenda can be spoken to by a member of the public.
Just on for like a weekly, every meeting, we can go over the same thing?
I will do that. I promise you, I will do that.
You're planning on doing it.
Public has the right to know.
Okay, can we stop the back and forth? Okay, are you done with your questions?
Yes, I'd like to speak on the item.
Are we discussing the item or just doing public comment? I don't.
The public can comment on any item on the agenda. This is simply thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay, all right. So can we take public comment, please?
Yes, Mayor Casey, I believe we're going to have one speaker.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Roland Rosendres. Can you stop? Thank you. Can we restart my time, please?
I leave that to the purview of the mayor and the city.
Madam Mayor.
You can res, excuse me. Yes, you can restart the time.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Roland Rosendres, and I am here speaking to you as a member of the public. Thank you for allowing me to speak as a member of the public. Every single member of this community and every single elected official has the right to voice their opinion and to not have their rights taken away from you or anybody else. It is a shame that you tried to stop me from having that right tonight, and I have to come down here and speak during public comment because you politically align yourself with a 79-time arrested, convicted child abuser who currently resides with a child molester, who is currently under investigation here at the city of Hollister for harassing staff, for physically assaulting a colleague. He is dangerous. He is using his public platform to lie and to say that everybody knew about this. You, Madam Mayor, are also helping him to lie with your people on the internet by saying that the elect, the elections department has cleared him and he's eligible to run for office. That is untrue. That is absolutely untrue. And I checked with Francisco Diaz about that. In fact, nobody knew he was a child abuser. Nobody knew he was a convicted child molester. He's living with a convicted child molester. Nobody knew he was arrested 79 times until after he was elected into office. And, but needle link, the last article that they put out said he was convicted of check fraud. It is, falls on this council and you, Madam Mayor, to stop protecting this person, to not allow him to bring his child molester roommate to public events when the community is asking us not to do that. I implore you to speak with the district attorney. I implore you to speak to the grand jury, and I implore you to do the job that you're elected to do and to ensure that this person is even eligible to sit up here and make decisions on our behalf. And one more thing, I will not be silenced, and I will bring it up at every meeting if I need to. Stop silencing my voice and the members of the public, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Is that a public comment?
Those are all the public comments I have for this item.
All right, so then can we get a thumbs up or thumbs down on bringing this item back for consideration over again? All right, so I think that's it for our items. City manager, do you have a report out at all?
Just a brief report. I just wanted to, uh, give the community update, the building department, as well as the planning and engineering department. Um, during COVID was closed during Fridays. It has now been reopened, uh, so it's five days a week, eight to, uh, or, uh, 8:30 to 4:30. And closed for lunch, like all our buildings here. But, um, it was closed on Friday, so now it's back open, uh, for the public on Friday. So thank, end of report.
Thank you. And no others department had reports, so we're good. All right, then we're going to move into closed session. Um, I guess we're going to, do we adjourn the meeting then? Are we adjourning?
No, I need to read the closed session descriptions, and then you will adjourn into closed session.
Okay, could you read out the closed session?
12.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 54956.9 of the government code one case. I'm conflicted out of this matter, so I will not be joining counsel in, in closed session for this one. 12.2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 54956.9 of the government code three cases, and I will join counsel for that one.
There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.